Good afternoon, and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, and Councilwoman Ramos, representing the 14th District. A couple of my colleagues are running a little bit late, and Councilwoman Porter will be has an excused absence today. Representing the Office of the President, we've got Preston Lewinson in the back, and Tiffany Macklin in the other back. Representing the Mayor's Office, we've got the Montzi, so, oh, Dominic. So, this afternoon, the Committee will have a hearing on LO-22-0030, Legislative Oversight, Crime Reduction, and Violence Prevention, for the purpose of the Committee holding regular hearings with the Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement, and other agencies to monitor the progress of the city's crime reduction and violence prevention efforts. This bill was introduced on December 5th of 2022 by myself, and today's meeting will be an end-of-year recap for the Baltimore City Police Department and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement. I want to, you know, at first acknowledge the great work that both of these agencies have been doing every day to make sure that Baltimore is a safer and more hospitable place to live, work, and play. We wouldn't be here without the great work that you guys have been putting in, so I want to thank you guys for that to date. Personally, I like to take the time at the end of every year to pause and reflect on the good, the bad, and the ugly, you know, what has been happening over the last 365 days, and chairing this Committee means nothing different. I want to take this opportunity today to reflect upon the highs and lows of the last year in order to educate ourselves on what's been going well, what has not been going well, and even more to position ourselves to do better in 2024. So, you know, for me, safety, security, and the health of the city has always been the highest priority, and, you know, I want to make sure that we take this opportunity to identify those opportunities to grow and continue to lean into those efforts that have been working, you know, over the last year. So again, I want to thank you guys for participating, I want to thank you guys for the work that you've been putting in over the last year, and really looking forward to this conversation, understand how things have gone, and, you know, what we're thinking about with the coming year. So with that, we'll go into presentations, starting with Commissioner Worley.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I was going to say members of the Committee, but I guess I say member of the Committee. Thank you for having me here today. I'm joined by my command staff, some of whom are here for the first meeting, first hearing. I'll get to that when we get to the org chart, and I'll introduce who they are. Today, I'm going to provide an update of where we are with the crime fight and the overall overview of some of the initiatives moving forward. While we are down over 500 officers, we continue to make significant progress in enforcement and deployment. During the presentation, you'll see the gun arrests, the gun statistics, as well as the citywide crime overview. This year, and especially the last couple of months, juvenile crime has been one of the most talked-about topics across the city, and I'm sure it will be for the next several months. It's something that we're addressing and working together with all our law enforcement partners, to include the state's Attorney's Office and the Department of Juvenile Services. As a matter of fact, tomorrow in our boardroom, all three of our teams are getting together, and we're going to have a joint meeting to see which way we can come up and make the juvenile process better. While we continue to work together for solutions to crime and better outcomes for our youth and residents is something that we know all of us are working collectively for, and I'm sure it'll show in the legislative level as well. I personally want to applaud State's Attorney Bates and his partnership for holding those accountable for crimes, to include the guardians of these juveniles when applicable, like he did last week with his press conference and the charging of the two individuals. I recently restructured the organization, the organization of the department, and promoted several commanders as well. I did this to better focus on departmental capacity, better focus on increasing departmental capacity, and acting, enacting more efficient policing, and continuing to build a successful community policing program. Additionally, new command positions and several promotions will help the BPD be both strategic and tactical with its leadership vision while continuing to work of restoring the community trust. I have an extremely skilled, knowledgeable, and experienced team. The best thing a leader can do is surround himself with people who are smarter than him or her. That's the way you will basically succeed. Operations is, you will see when you get the staffing chart, if you haven't, I was Operations Deputy Commissioner for about nine months, and what I realized, no matter how hard I worked and how much I worked, I was never able to keep up with it the way I wanted to, and especially the community policing part. So what I did, the very first thing, and the biggest change you'll see, is the Operations Bureau is now divided into two different entities. There'll be Patrol and Community Policing Bureau, and the other bureau will manage criminal investigations. The Patrol and Community Policing Bureau includes four lieutenant colonels at this point. On January 1, there will only be three. Lieutenant Colonel Mark Howe, who, I mean, if I wished was here today, after 43 years and nine months, is retiring from the Police Department effective January 1. So I want to thank him publicly for all of his great service. There are also now a deputy commissioner that will over, what allowed me to put the two deputy commissioners in patrol or in operations is that Deputy Commissioner NATO volunteered to oversee both compliance and the Public Integrity Bureau. These are just phase one of a two-phase process. It was going to be a three-phase, but I think we'll finish the second phase in January 14th, and all that is replacing some majors and captains who have been promoted and moved on. While I don't want to speak for Montzi on the group violence reduction strategy, I can say that Phase Two includes expanding our group violence unit to add eight positions. Four of those will be added on Sunday, the other four will be added on December 31st. The strategy, coupled with arrests and removing more guns from our streets, has me feeling cautiously optimistic that we can come in under 300 homicides for the first time in eight or nine years. And I say that because I don't count on anything until 12:01 on January 1. But as of today, we are at 251 homicides, which is 67 less than we had this time last year. And despite even the worst tragedy in city's history with the Brooklyn Day, we're going, we are 60 shootings less than we had last year. And miraculous with the Southern is they're going to end up with, probably end up with less shooting victims than they had last year, even though they had 28 at one time. So unfortunately, even the 251 is, it's not a number to celebrate, it's a number to be happy with and know we can do better, but it's still 251 lives that we lost in the city. So we've got a, our goal is to actually increase the decrease. But every one of those incidents is a constant reminder of how much more work we have to do and how much safer we can make the city. I've only been serving as Commissioner for a few months, however, I've been working toward the goal of reforming the Police Department, working with the community, and making quality arrests throughout my entire career, like I've done in my entire career. As I continue in this role, I intend to focus and strengthen community relationships, ensure that officers are out of their cars, interacting with the community, and walking foot, and I intend for the department to be out of the consent decree by the time my tenure is over within, in three years. We've moved from the guardian, to the guardian from the warrior mentality, and together we'll create a safer Baltimore. Thank you for letting me provide the updates, and if you have the staffing chart in front of you, I'll go over each one of them. If you start from the far left-hand side, newly promoted Deputy Commissioner Monique Brown is going to oversee Patrol and Community Policing. There is a Colonel spot that is vacant, we will fill that at some point in the next probably six months to a year, but I want to see how it goes with Patrol because we've given a little more oversight to the districts. We split the city into three areas, which is not anything unique, we used to do that. Each area is overseen by Lieutenant Colonel, Lieutenant Colonel Callahan, who moved from the Criminal Investigation side to Patrol, is going to oversee Area 1, which is the Central, Southeast, and Eastern. He will also have the booking facility and building security. Area 2 is going to be overseen by newly promoted Atis Brickus, who's here with us today. She's going to oversee the Northeast, Northern, Northwest, and on January 14th, she is actually going to oversee the Special Events Unit. Lieutenant, newly promoted Lieutenant Colonel Thacker is going to oversee the Western, Southwest, and Southern. He's also going to oversee the Special Operations Sections and what used to be the Special Services Section. That section is going to be basically disbanded, some of them will fall under Major Webb, others are going to go to Community Policing, and then some are going to go, the Special Events is going to fall under Lieutenant Colonel Brickus. The new part you see there is a Deputy Chief. I think it shows vacant there. That is going to be Sarah Ritter. She is going to become the Deputy Chief of Community Policing. Six years ago, when she came here, that's what she came here for, and she's kind of worked full circle back, and she's excited. She, she's going to be, she, along with our district commanders and our lieutenant colonels, are going to be driving the community policing model, mainly because that's the only part of the consent decree that we are not on track. So we've got to get that on track and move that forward. The other side, to move to the right, it's going to be the Criminal Investigation Bureau, that's going to be overseen by Deputy Commissioner Kevin Jones. Under that bureau is going to be the ACS Group Violence Unit, that's going to be overseen by newly promoted Robert Velty. Lieutenant Colonel Steve Holman, newly promoted Steve Holman, is going to oversee the homicide and special investigative section, along with Homeland Security. And then the biggest change you'll see there is there's Lieutenant Colonel Jack Herzog is going to oversee our district detective units and our citywide component. That is going to be the change because the district commanders will no longer be responsible for overseeing the district detective units. They will all answer to one Lieutenant Colonel. They're still going to be housed in the districts, the DAT teams will remain under the control of the district commanders, but the detectives will all answer to Lieutenant Colonel Herzog. They'll still answer to the district commanders, but when I got to the Northeast, I struggled with overseeing detectives because I never did it before. I eventually got acceptable at it. I don't know if I was really ever good at it, and I think that's too much burden on the district commanders, and freeing them of that allows them to do the community policing a lot more and to focus a lot more on community policing because they don't, that probably spends half their time on, or answering for the shootings. So I think that will help them a great deal. And then you also see Graham Campbell, who will be a Deputy Chief. He is going to oversee data-driven, just what he has right now. But I took some things from him, he used to have building security, which I moved from him, and I moved Homeland Security from him because I want him to concentrate on just data and getting the data correctly. And then the other two is very little change. You'll see Deputy Commissioner NATO oversees compliance and the Public Integrity Bureau. There are two civilian chiefs that will be named, that's going to be a new role. Those will be Shannon Solomon, who's here with us, she's going to be the Chief of Compliance, and Director Akani is going to be, going to be the new Chief of PIB, and then we have to replace their positions. So to put one more level of oversight in the Compliance and Public Integrity Bureau that hopefully will allow us to move on to the, through the consent decree. And then the Admin Bureau is overseen by Deputy Commissioner Briscoe. She is adding a Chief of Human Resources that will oversee some of the things there, and we have to replace the Major in Recruitment, is where Lieutenant Colonel Brickus came from, but we're also going to add a Captain in that position. So those are the main changes. The only other things that'll fill in are a couple majors. We have to replace the Special Investigative Section Major because Major Bishop is retiring, and the two positions where Lieutenant Colonel Velty and Lieutenant Colonel Brickus vacated when they promoted. The Major in the Northeast, I mean, the Major in the Eastern is new. Major Jai Wauwu was promoted out of the Deputy Commissioners' Office, has now took the place of Lieutenant Colonel Thacker in the Eastern. Major Jennifer McGrath is out, she's out on medical, but she will be the Major of the Southwest. She was the Captain. Major Carter Bay retired. The new Captain there is going to be Captain Cologne, who came from the homicide unit. The homicide unit will have a new Captain, will post for a new Captain. So those are all the major changes. I don't think, Lieutenant, I'm sorry, Major Swinton moved from Special Services Section to the Major of the Northeast, and Major Mark Taylor was in the Chief of Patrol's Office. He's overseeing the Southwest until Major McGrath comes back, which we believe will be February 1. Any questions?
Yeah, I have questions, and I'll open up to, to the Committee if there are any additional questions here. Just looking at a couple of vacancies that we have that I know are really, really important, glad to hear that we're going to fill in Sarah Ritter, I've worked with her for a while, she's incredible. I think the ones that pop out to me immediately are the Personnel Services and the Recruitment ones, noting that those are probably two of the most important weaknesses that we currently have right now, noting the 500 officer deficit that we have. How are we thinking about those roles? How are we thinking about filling those and finding somebody that can help us be a little more creative in recruitment tactics across the department?
We're going to fill them, but I think, I don't think it's going to, well, I don't want to say it's not going to matter because we're replacing someone who was very good at recruitment. The issues that we have at recruitment is we're battling everybody else throughout the country for the same pool of people. So we're going to think outside the box with some more, some other things. The Mayor's Office is helping us, but the new Major will also get the benefit of having a Captain work under them, which Major Brickus at the time did not have. So we're going to put, she told us that that was one of the things that she needed, so we're going to give another level of support there. And then the Chief of Human Resources is going to be a civilian, it's going to be a professional staff, because that's not going to be a sworn member. And we're going to do some other things in recruitment to bolster up some of the things throughout the city, but we're, the Mayor's Office, I know, is working with GBC and Bloomberg to help with recruitment. But again, it's just fighting, we can throw all the money we want at it, you just gotta, and money is really the third reason why people leave an agency or come to an agency. Upper mobility and working conditions are number one and number two. So we're, I think we're doing a good job with the upward mobility, it's a fairer process, and the working conditions, we got the money to build a couple new districts. It's just going to take a little time, but what we can do is, and put a little fixes on the districts that we have, and we're working on doing that, to work, to work, get the working conditions, better cars, I think those are all things that we can do here, and then try to retain the people that we have. We lost a lot of people this year, I think we're net over 100 already this year, or at this year. So I want to get next year, 2024, I want to be positive with bringing officers in.
Yeah, I think those are all, you know, things we need to do, and I'm glad we're thinking about them. I think, you know, those two roles are going to be really important, and, you know, as we think about who we get into that role, making sure they have a strong vision and have the sort of ability to organize and keep everybody on the same task, will go a long way. You know, of course, we're competing nationally for folks, so it's not easy to get folks to come and take a job as a police officer today, but certainly, we want to make sure that we have the best recruiting folks possible to help us get that done, and whatever we can do to keep officers here, getting a strong understanding of whatever the reasons are why people decide to leave to go to other opportunities, that Personnel Services role is going to be really important. So just, that jumped out to me immediately. Any other questions from the Committee? I want to acknowledge Councilman Cohen and Councilman Burnett, who've joined the meeting, and Councilman Costello, who's also joined the meeting.
And also what I did, sorry to interrupt you, man, what I, what we've done is we did these moves in December instead of waiting until January, because for the next month, everyone that has moved is going to be working kind of two roles, because the whole department is switching. So everybody's working two roles, and Lieutenant Colonel Brickus is going to be working with Deputy Commissioner Briscoe to help pick her replacement, because that's where she's, she came from. Lieutenant Colonel Thacker is going to work with the Eastern to help their commanders. So everybody's doing dual roles, and then when we get into January, everybody should be comfortable where they're at, all the offices are straight, and then we can hit the New Year running. But even, even with the transition, the people have, have done a, done a great job with the transition so far, and the men and women out there on the street, along with all our various partners in the city government, state government, state's Attorney's Office, and federal government, have continued to do a really good job throughout the year.
Before I hand it off, do we have a timeline for filling those two roles in particular? Do we have a sense of how long?
January 14th.
January 14th, okay.
Of course, I would do it this Sunday, but we don't have enough time, because this is our transfer, and then the next transfer is December 31st.
Got it.
So it's New Year's Eve. So I may do the 31st if we get it done, and just date it to like January 1, but at the latest will be on the 14th of January, when our HR cycle switches.
So we already know who will fill these positions?
No.
We do not? Okay, all right.
That's, that's what's holding up. What we do, even with our command positions now, we learned that we probably want to see who's interested, not probably, we want to see who's interested in a position, because I was talking to somebody, and they were put in a position that they never really wanted about a year and a half ago, and they never said anything, so we want people to tell us if they're interested in a position. If you're not interested, even if you're the best person, you, we think you're the best person, doesn't mean that we're going to put you there. Doesn't mean we're not either, but if you're the best person, and we have to do it for the good of the agency, we will, but we want people to go to positions that they're happy with so that they can make a difference, because if they're happy, they'll, they'll be a better employee.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Member Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm losing two majors, but I know the majors that are coming are very good, so I'm looking forward to working with them.
I want to let you know that those two majors apply, I didn't take them, they applied to lead.
Okay, so that says a lot.
Major Thacker applied to be a Lieutenant Colonel when he was promoted.
Don't say anymore, don't say anymore.
And Major Amy applied to the Compliance Bureau.
It's all good, it's all good, it's all good. So, but my question was about the NCOs. We have had a lot of discussion, you and I, but also publicly, about the role of the NCOs in community policing, and have talked about sort of consolidating their oversight a little bit, rather than having every, sort of like what you're doing with the detectives, rather than having every major, every major should, you know, have a role in oversight, but also that there be training and assistance, and so is that moving forward as well?
That's the whole reason, when me, when I went to New York, the person that was sitting next to me when we went to New York and brought the Neighborhood Policing, Neighborhood Coordination Officer Program here was Sarah Ritter. We went up there and brought that program back, and we were putting it in the Patrol, and then of course, things went, went bad with, in the department with 2015, so then we moved on, and when we brought it back, and then COVID kind of really pushed it away. We started, we want every officer to be a Neighborhood Coordinator, not three people.
Understood.
Three people can't handle everything, and I think just getting the officer out of the car, getting them out of their comfort zone, and then they'll realize this, this isn't really that bad. This is an easy part of the job, is going, talking to the community. It's no enforcement, you're not answering calls, and you can get out there and actually make a difference by walking foot for 15 or 20 minutes. But that's going to be, she's going to oversee the Neighborhood Policing Coordinator, which is Nikita Lewis. She's also going to have Victim Services, which is Shardell Rose, and she's, they're going to increase the amount of oversight with the NCOs, even though they work for the district commanders. But the district commanders now have more time because they're not worried about the district detective units.
Right.
To concentrate on community policing, and that's, that's where we weren't, we were, we were spread too thin, and doing, I think putting this all together is going to help us a great deal. And we still can make some changes if we see we need to do different things.
No, I agree that officers should be doing community policing, no question. I think the role of the NCOs, particularly how we've mastered it with your assistance, frankly, in the Northeast, and the NCOs that are there, that works and should really be citywide, so I'm hoping that we can, you know, do that, because that role of literally engaging, creating events, you know, working, going to meetings, you know, all the other things that our friends in the Northeast do is, is going to be important to have citywide. So I'm hoping we can get there. So that's all for this piece. I'm sure you're going to allow us to do questions later on?
Yeah, we will. Any other questions about the org chart? Thank you, Commissioner, you can continue.
That's it?
Okay.
Oh, I thought you said we weren't doing the slides. Okay, we can go through the slides really quick. Okay. You thought we were doing the slides. Basically, what you see there, you have the narcotics violations, 1,353, handguns, 1,324, robbery arrests, 416, attempted murder, 182, and murder, 94. Our clearance rates in, in the homicides are about 45%, and our shootings up around 28%, which is an 8% increase, and the homicide rate is up about 5%. Not where we want them to be, but I think once everyone gets used to the new case management system we have, and we get Axon to tweak some things that we need to do, and the oversight is going to help us a great deal. Here we see the 2023 gun arrests, it's down about 10%. 1,400, 2022, 2023 gun arrests by Patrol is 1,348, and then the non-Patrol units, and the reason that's down so significantly is a lot of those units have, are no longer non-Patrol. We put people back into Patrol, so there's not quite as many people to hit that pool of individuals. Now you see here, the biggest, the biggest difference there is the, is the, you see the homicide, now those numbers are accurate based on our Axon, though I know the, the shooting, and this is something that we, we're constantly working on with getting things fixed, is how, how reports are put into the computer. Like, for example, our shooting numbers are a lot better than that, but what happened is some of our officers were put in, they get shot with a BB gun, it's an ag assault. We're one of the few agencies that separates shootings out from the aggravated assaults. Usually all of them have the aggravated assaults, and then you see the big difference is robberies. That is, we were actually below about three or four months ago, and then what we talked about earlier, the, the crime with the young people is what's driving that, driving that crime number. And then domestic and youth, youth crime, the good thing, if there is a good thing in any of this, is that with the youth crime, we've had less homicides, even though we've had the more shooting victims, and even if you would have extracted, would have occurred in Brooklyn, we would still would have been over with the non-fatal shooting victims. But the, the good thing of all of it is that we've had less young people succumb to the injuries after being shot than we did last year. Now the, the goal is to increase, decrease both of them next year. This is something that you, you see, most of the young people that we arrest are in the upper teens, the 16, 17, before they become adults. Those, I have a feeling are going to change in 2024. Unfortunately, we find young people committing more violent acts now with handguns. We just got a 13 and a 14-year-old, Mondam and Maul, committing a carjacking, and both of them had a handgun on them. And then the juvenile arrests, 526 that are 17, you see 2023 year-to-date, 480. And the reason that the juvenile, and then when you talk about juvenile arrests, that's how many actually went to juvenile booking. We have a diversion process that we do, sometimes a lot of the young people that we arrest don't even make it to the booking facility, they're released to their parents from the officer taking them home. Carjacking and auto theft arrest of juveniles, year-to-date, 234. You see the juvenile arrest, total juvenile arrest, 284. That's it. Any questions on that?
I got a question from Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioner. Can you, so you mentioned the, I think, sort of alluded to like both diversion programs, but I think the other piece that has come up pretty persistently is like arresting the same folks over and over again, particularly on this line around carjacking and auto thefts. Can you speak to why we're seeing so much of that? This, this, well, this year's been, you know, the highest in the last four, for rearrest. Sort of what are folks seeing on the ground on, on that?
The, the way the process works, let's say we arrest a young person for a carjacking. We take them to juvenile booking, we contact the Department of Juvenile Services. They decide if they're going to prosecute them, or if they're going to do, use them for diversion or have them go home. Once they decide to prosecute them, it's then sent on to the state's attorney for them to prosecute the case. But if they decide to send them home, we have no choice but to take them home, and it never gets to the state's attorney, and then the individual is back out. Plus then, if, even if they are prosecuted, if they're not held for a long period of time and they go back, they're back out, then they're going to re, reoffend, and we, unfortunately, we catch them again, and it's the process, the system. That, that's why we're all working together, and that meeting tomorrow is so important with the DJS, the state's attorney, and myself, to fix this process so that there is no im-.
the state's attorney and myself, to fix this process so that there is no ambiguity when we talk about it. We already have a little bit and I think it's going better. We still have to tweak it and get it better. But like with everything, it's, it was broken and we're, we're working to fix it and we have to, we're not going to do it overnight. But we, all three departments working together is going, I think it'll, you'll see a difference as we move forward.
And I, I guess what are some of the issues in the, I guess, the current work, workspace versus what you're working towards? That, I guess, what are some of the gaps that you're seeing in, in coordination?
Probably the biggest gap that I see is sometimes the state's attorney is not, is not, does not get a chance to weigh in. The ideal thing, and me and Mr. Bates talked about this yesterday, today, it was actually his idea. The ideal thing is to, at juvenile booking, is you have a lawyer for the Department of Juvenile Services, you have the state's attorney, and you have the BPD. We bring the individual in, they all collaboratively look at it and decide what's the best course of action for the individual. And then, then you've got all three entities there that can figure this out instead of putting the burden on one agency itself. We, we're all there together 24/7 and we make a decision that's best for the kid and, but best for the public as well. If the, if this, if the young person has committed two carjackings, then he needs to, or she needs to be held accountable for it. That doesn't mean you get, they get to go home. It means they get held until they, whatever the decision is to prosecute. But that, that's why the, the young people, I mean, when we were kids, we got away with what we could have got away with, with our parents. And that's the way the system is too. They, the young people know if they're, if they know, if you know you're not going to get disciplined for what you do, all of us, there, you may continue to do it until at some point there's some discipline. And that's, we, we've got to bring that discipline a little bit, a little bit sooner in the process. But I think if we can, everyone agree to have all the, all the, all the partners in one spot at one time and we do what's best for the city and, and the community, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner, I got a couple of questions here. Since we're talking about juveniles, I'll, I'll focus on that first. If you go back one slide, there's a slide, this one, yes, juvenile contact arrestee age. What really jumped out to me here were the 15-year-olds. Pretty consistently, year over year, our 15-year-olds end up with the most arrests. That has me really begging the question, why? What is it about 15 that is popping out?
There are certain offenses that once you are above 14, you can be held more accountable for that than if you were under 14. That, that's the magic age, the 15. Fif-- once you go above 14 and then when you hit 16, there's another threshold. But that, that's mainly, under, under 15, some things we really can't charge with or they won't be, they won't be charged with or they won't be arrested for. But once you get above that, that's why the arrests are, are different.
And, and you find that those very charges seem to drop off around 16 because those, why is it?
I, I wish I knew. I, I don't really know why those charges drop off. Go ahead. If you guys have something, jump, jump in, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Because now at, at 16, the more serious offenses, those, and the young people can now be charged as adults. So they, they, those numbers would be counted into our adult arrests and not still counted as a juvenile arrest. But they are mo-- most serious shootings, homicides. Definitely some of, they, they'll have to look and see if they have been previous offenders, maybe with more serious, you know, charges as well in, in their background. And now they're still offending.
Got it. This goes to our conversation in our last hearing about if you are 14 and under, you can't be charged for certain things. And then at 15, if they are violent things, you can be charged. 16, you can be charged as an adult is why this.
Yes. And the 13 and under, I mean, under the new law, unless it is really egregious, more likely homicide or shooting or something like that, then the, the course is very different for them. Most of it is for diversion.
And, and so when looking at these numbers, do those more serious crimes, homicide, shootings, do they not, are they not captured here? Or?
They're, they're usually not because if you, if you get escalated to an adult, then you're charged as an adult and you're not charged as a juvenile.
They're captured on the previous one?
Yep. If you go back to the previous, come back down. Okay, there you go. Yep.
I see. Let me go back a slide.
You see, I think the numbers were 85 and 85. So it's a lot of, most of the people to get elevated, the young people. If you go to the next slide, 85 and 137. That would be the difference. How many were elevated to adults? Would it be 40? What is it, 52?
All right. I'm getting a little confused here. If you could walk me through it. All right, so if we can go back to the, the one with the smaller, this one. Okay. So what does this tell me? This is age at arrest.
For adult charges.
For adult cha-- for adult charges.
Yes.
Got it. Got it. And then the next one, this is arrestee age, age at arrest.
Department of Juvenile, yes. Yes.
Okay, that helps a ton.
Juvenile issues are very confusing, as you can see.
So I, I see we separate here. It, it really makes me think, because I'm, I'm trying to look for trends across young people and where best to intervene. Is it reasonable to be able to combine these together? Or would that overlap not necessarily make sense?
No, because some of the charges is only, only juvenile related, meaning that they all stay in the juvenile system. And then under the adult charges is when they are being charged as adults, so they were into, into the adult criminal system. I guess is, is how to really differentiate.
But you can't be charged in both.
Aaron, you explain that because you, you lawyer, yeah.
We'll let the lawyer explain that one.
Good afternoon. Erin Murphy, Director of Government Affairs. Pretending to be a lawyer today. No, I actually am one. I, I, I think what happens is, you know, it's the arrest, but then when a juvenile is charged as an adult, sometimes they will be reversed waived back. There is a hearing that is a reverse waiver hearing when you have very serious crimes when a juvenile is charged. And there are very specific rules that the judges will look at to see whether or not that child remains in, in the circuit court as a juvenile, charged as an adult, but still in, remains in circuit court, charged as an adult. And oftentimes, what you'll see is the judge is making a decision, whether it be previous contact, age. They do an entire reverse waiver report that discusses home life, other things. And then the judge will take that into consideration and determine whether or not that child belongs in adult court or gets waived back to the juvenile system.
Got it. I, I'll probably need a little bit more of a refresher altogether, just so I make sure I fully understand it.
Usually if they're elevated to the adult court, it's usually a firearm involved.
Got it.
That's, that's, a firearm or another weapon is usually.
It's like gun arrests or treated differently for young people. Got it. I want to jump to another question. If you go back a few slides to the domestic and youth violence piece. We saw a pretty significant uptick in robberies amongst juveniles. Youth violence over, year over year, 97.9% increase in robberies and then a 46.3% increase in larcenies. Do we have any insight on what's going on there? Maybe where we're seeing it? Are we seeing it in certain districts? Are we seeing it in certain areas?
You're seeing it a lot in the, you, you see it in the southeast, you see it in the northeast, which are the schools. But with, the reason those numbers have increased is because we have young peo-- more young people committing the robberies and they are targeting young people as well. And I'll leave it to the rest of the team to jump in if they'd like. But it's, it's mainly, we track it every day. The nor-- the southeast continues to be one of our robbery hubs. Northeast has kind of got away from it because they lost a lot of the stuff, the lower end, where the, the bus stop at Bel Air and Erdman. But the eastern has done a really good job in there. So some of the districts do pop up, but the biggest thing is there's a lot more young people committing the crimes as well.
Yeah, and I asked that question before you answer. I asked that question because it might tell us, like if we're seeing young people committing more robberies, when it's happening, where it's happening? Is it happening after schools and around schools? Can we coordinate with school police or with schools or parents or whoever else provides supervision to young people as they leave schools? So that this doesn't happen as often. That, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, it, it's a little bit of both. So working with school police, we are identifying specific areas and specific schools. So we know that there is something that has been for a while brewing at Patterson Park. We know that there has been something brewing with Mervo. Probably three weeks ago, I spent, had a meeting with the principals at Mervo in reference to some problematic areas and footprints outside of the school. Working with safe passage and identifying those other areas that either BPD in conjunction with school police and others of providing visibility behind homes and garages and other things like that. We do know historically, when it comes to issues like around the harbor with Digital Harbor, around Patterson Park, around like Tovoli and, or Mervo, those areas consistently where there are shops or other things, you're going to see an uptick in unfortunate, unfortunately, larcenies and other things and robberies and some beefs with juveniles. So we have been working with, excuse me, school police as well as the schools themselves with the deans of discipline. One of the biggest things that we had is this is not just going to be BPD and school police. The deans of discipline from those schools also need to be out there or have individuals from that school. Because even school police doesn't know every Johnny and every Sally. But to have that dean of discipline out there, having the individual identified, that there's no more anonymity, but also having some kind of consequences on the backend of, we told you, this is a problem. And now that having some real causation in the school as far as maybe you won't be allowed to go to this dance or maybe you won't be allowed to do, you know, play in this game this week, that there's some kind of real-time consequences for those juveniles who continue to participate. So yes, we have.
Yeah. I, I would love to, and maybe this is a conversation we can maybe have after this, this hearing.
We, we actually have a, I think it's monthly, youth stat? Yeah, we usually have youth stat every month. The mayor's office started it back when we started seeing all the uptick in, in juvenile shootings. And we talk about the school systems in there, school police, MTA, we're all in one room talking about how better we can serve these young people so that they're not victims or suspects in, in the crimes. And, and we, we continue to meet every week to come up with solutions. That's how, honestly, I think that's how we were able to decrease it in the summertime is the, through the mayor's office. They just kept them busy with, with events most of the time. And the ones who are going to be the criminals are, are not going to, they're going to resist anything you give them. But the ones that are on the fringe, we kept, they kept them busy. And it helped us a lot to lower the numbers because they were a lot, they were on pace to be a lot higher than what they are right there in the first six months.
I, I would love to, because of course, this is just a couple of numbers. There's a number of ways we could look at this over the course of the year. Was this front-loaded before we began to react? Have those changes made the difference and are we just seeing, you know, really the numbers from the early part of the year before we started making changes? Or is there something that persisted through the entire year that we do need to think about for the coming year? I just don't know from this number. And I would also, you know, love to know, or at least, I don't need to know because I'm not going to make the decision, you will, Commissioner. But if we're, if we know anything about the location, if we know anything about the times, to figure out what we can do to coordinate with school police, neighbors in the area, stores and otherwise, so that we have an appropriate response. Because certainly we don't want to go into the next year seeing robberies amongst young people and larcenies amongst young people continue to be high. So.
Yes, sir.
You know, just thinking about that.
Yes, sir.
Of, of course, we know we're not going to wrestle our way out of the problem, but there's a lot of things we can do with supervision of young people that can really get ahead of that problem. So.
And I, I think just to add, Mr. Chair, is, you know, majority of our patterns throughout the year has been juvenile-driven. And what we have seen, and I think we testified before, is that we do have some of our juveniles who are jumping into different patterns. So they are connecting themselves socially through a network and not just because they are connected to others in geography. So because they go to school and because they're connected through social media is how we're finding that they are moving around in some of these patterns. And I can't remember the total number of patterns that we've had this year, but most of them have always taken us into double-digit. So we do know that it is juvenile-driven. We are focused on the right juveniles. It's just that now really having this collaborative effort with DJS and now with state's attorney, we're really hoping that we can turn the tide. We know that the law, law is there that kind of hinders us just a tad in what it is that we can do. But I think really making some of those connections and really giving them real wraparound services before they are released from DJS, I think, will go a long way. And so that's some of the conversations that we're now having as a part of another work group with DJS. So I think that maybe all of us in this room is in some type of meeting or connection with DJS, really trying to work our way through the problem because we recognize that it is an issue. And definitely not just trying to say, hey, listen, all of us, all young people, because we do need to give them different opportunity. But we're finding that through some of their social networking and how they're connecting to other people in groups. And then this is like a national trend as well. I don't know if they are picking it up again, just like we know how the Hyundai key has started through TikTok. If you start to see all of these other national trends, how they're committing all of these flash-type robberies and things that they're doing the same and just trying to emulate that as well. So. But we, we've had several patterns over this year that we've seen the same juveniles, just in different groups, still committing some of these robberies. And I think staying focused on those ones that we know that are reciprocating is, is going to be our biggest way to make sure that we're getting the right services to bring them away from, you know, some of this activity.
One of the biggest things that we were doing prior to the transition was working with, specific schools have now introduced or had an opening for truancy officers. So I know one of our greatest assets that retired from us was NCO Officer Chuck Lee. Chuck Lee is now at Furman Templeton as a truancy officer, so he's monitoring those things. So working with them on the front end when we know that unfortunately problematic individuals are not in school that day, giving not only school police, but BPD that heads up that, hey, Billy's not in school today. There's something that we need to do in reference to maybe a knock and talk at Billy's house, find out where he is or the area that he hangs in, so we can be more proactive on the front end than reactive on the backend.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Last point I'll make here, and, and then if, if my colleagues also have questions. I also noted, and we, we are aware of this trend, but an increase in shootings amongst young people. We saw a 43.8% increase this year. We saw that early this year and even going back into last year. I'm curious if, if what we know about that trend now in December, has anything changed about it? Are we seeing it in any different places, any different times, anything like that, that might help inform, one, our, our, you know, police strategy, but then also our sort of social strategy and what we can do with partnerships in order to, to help young people before they, they turn to a gun.
We, I think earlier in the year, we were seeing victims that were usually younger. As the years progressed, most of our victims are 16, 17 now. I mean, you'll get one occasionally that's not, but earlier in the year, we were getting 12, 13 and even younger children that were shot. And that's never really a good thing, but the, the, again, the problem is the proliferation of guns in the city is, like the 13 and 14-year-old, what are they doing with the gun? I mean, he should be doing something else, some other. But they both had handguns trying to commit a robbery and they probably can't even see over the steel, or carjack. They probably can't even see over the steering wheel to drive the car. So they're trying, they're out there with a weapon and somehow they got their hands on a weapon. So how, or how are 13 and 14-year-olds getting handguns? And in order to do that, most of our robberies with those young people are with, are either with weapons or with multiple young people. And we did, our, our detectives did a phenomenal job. There was one, one location that we knew was driving a lot of violence. And we've made multiple arrests at that location to, of young people to quash, kind of quash that, that pattern. But unfortunately, there's so many of them and we keep dealing with some of the same ones over and over again. But we, we do know that we actually had, it was a specific house that we knew they were, they were frequenting and we targeted it and did a really good job. The detectives did a good job. So we constantly monitor that when our crime calls every day.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Certainly the access to guns has been a conversation we've been having ad nauseam in this committee and, you know, really look forward to leading into the partnerships, both at the federal, state level to, to help us meet that need and be more intelligent about that approach. Still a big problem here. I know we want to get on top of this and certainly see that number dive significantly. I just, I want to make sure that we're prepared for next year and we, we, we address it going forward. Councilman Cohen.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Commissioner and team. Commissioner, a few weeks ago, we sent a letter to you from myself and Team 46 to yourself and the head of DJS and appreciate the frank conversation that you and I and Aaron had following that letter. And also appreciate hearing the-- Aaron had um following that letter and also appreciate hearing that those conversations have been happening between you all and DJS. I think that's important to recognize progress when it occurs, so definitely appreciate that um that is happening. I was curious specifically, you mentioned um in speaking to State's Attorney Bates, having an attorney, a State's Attorney, BPD and DJS all there in the booking intake. Um, I mean, that sounds spot on. My question though is realistically, given shortages in all departments, do we have capacity to do that?
Well, it wouldn't hurt our capacity because our officer is is bringing the young person there. And the States, it was actually Mr. Bates's idea. So he he has the, he's hired multiple um attorneys over the last couple of years and he's redone his juvenile um processing. So he he supports it and we're going to present that tomorrow um at the meeting. So we, we're both on board and DJS does have someone there. Um, it gets into a technical issue with with the lawyers and the charging, so he and the Secretary Sharardi are going to work that part out, but I don't think it's going to be a problem because we're all going to be there and we just bring the young person down.
So you don't see challenges with capacity getting in the way? Because I, I mean, this seems like the plan we always should have had. Um, so you you feel like there's actually a path to be able to do this in a organized sort of coherent way moving forward?
Yeah, yes, and I think for us, it it could be a policy change as well because we give a little discretion to our commanders on stolen autos because of uh the way, the way we catch the young people. So if we take more to juvenile, the juvenile facility, some of them don't ever make it there, they just get taken home. We eliminated the phone conversation, there's no phone conversations any longer, and he might talk on the phone at some point, but the DJS gets the, will get a written report now before they make a decision. So, um, and we just have to, we'll tweak our policy for what offenses we want them to take down because uh this this problem has escalated so quickly with these young people with stealing cars. Um, and we just got to get, we we got to fix it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And again, really glad to hear there's been progress made and would just hope and encourage that those conversations become really routine, that, you know, Monty can play some role in it as well as we think about both holding young people accountable, but also what are the services that are needed to divert them away from uh whatever it is they've gotten into. Um, it's been a lot of conversation about some of the state laws and changes in the state laws. I'm just curious your take as police commissioner, uh, you know, as, this is not us in this chamber, but as our folks head back into legislative session, um, do they need to change those laws? Has there been, has it, has it not been enough time for the laws to be properly implemented? I'm I'm just sort of curious from BPD's perspective, sort of how you see uh that framework and particularly some of the changes that were made in the past year or two years?
Um, I I think what's happened with, and and this is, this was a another part of the the thing we were going to speak about tomorrow, is that the state's attorney wants to have a lawyer at juvenile booking, but DJS, we want to see if DJS can also have someone there other than just the person that's going to decide whether we're going to prosecute so that we can advise them, have the lawyer advise the young person with their parents whether or not to talk to us or not. Um, it may be beneficial for them to talk to us at some point, even if they're arrested, if they're just a witness, um, it could be beneficial, but that's what we will allow the lawyers to do. But I think at some point, um, our officers, we we can't even, we can't even ask a young person anything anymore. We we just, the officers have just resigned themselves to the fact that we just arrest them and take them down and we can't talk to them about anything.
Got it.
There's a lot of intel that we're missing um when the the person, the young person could give us information, but we have to wait until we speak to a lawyer or their parent to allow us to do it, when in fact, they may not even be a suspect, they may be a witness, but they're not allowing us to to basic, not allowing them to speak to us as a witness.
Noted. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you, Councilman. I want to acknowledge Councilman Glover, who's joined the meeting. Uh, any other questions on this part of the presentation? Councilwoman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm encouraged by the dialogue here around making sure that all of the branches, if you will, are talking to each other. But what I, I know that you talked about victim services and youth services, but I didn't hear Monty as part of the conversation um about what's going on here. I mean, DJS is definitely not Baltimore City, it's a state entity. Um, we have a situation in one of my um areas where I had to, I brought in the delegate because they have a better interaction with the, with DGS, uh, DJS, you you know about it. So um, that's important, but I know that DJS, they're, they're starting to reform a lot of their services, basically modeling after some of the things that Monty has been doing. So I'm just curious if um, in, I don't know if it's case by case specific or whether there's um opportunity for for that. Because I do think that um our young people don't, you know, wake up and say, I'm going to go rob somebody or steal something. You know, something has happened in their lives that we have to intervene and sometimes that first touch with the ju- justice system is what that is. And so I just want to make sure that they're getting, in addition to to, you know, the discipline, but also that they're getting all the services that they need.
No, that's, that's what we're, that's what the the design is, is that when they go to juvenile booking, why did the young person do what they did? Is it something wrong in the family? And they still have to be held accountable, but then they can bring in the part of all of our, all of our, our units and all of our departments is to bring in all the wraparound services, which is what Monty provides. So if there's a kid that we know, like when we have a shooting victim and there's other siblings in the house, Monty can go in and and speak to try to, to see if we can help because no kid should have to go through that.
Right.
But discipline may not be the correct thing for for one kid. It may be the same, same, two kids that did the same offense, one may need discipline, the other one may just need some wraparound services to get him on the right path. So that's what the the three-pronged system is at the juvenile facility to see what's the best path to get that child out of a life of crime.
Mm-hmm.
Because nobody, I mean, you don't want to victimize a kid at fourteen or fifteen and their whole entire, entire life's gone. But if we don't, eventually, at some point, they're going to commit something and we've had it happen, committing a carjacking and they get shot and killed.
Yeah, it's horrible, yeah. No, I I appreciate that.
But I'll let Stephanie talk in all the wraparound services, but we do use them a great deal.
Thank you, Commissioner Stephanie Mevronis, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Um, we've been at the table as well with DJS. I think I'm excited about some of the conversations that are underway with BPD and DJS to figure out where there's gaps in that process. DJS has invited us to poke holes in the process and to make sure we can come out together with something that actually works. Um, I see the next phase of that conversation and I'm excited to work with DC Brown on this as well. We have youth diversion work, we have relationships with service providers and we know, to your point, um, we want to make sure that BPD knows they can tap into those resources and that we're also closing the gaps where they exist with DJS. Um, so we'll continue to be at the table and like the Commissioner mentioned, at the youth violence stat meetings that are happening, I think at the last one, we actually had um representative, last two, representation from DJS in the room, really to start talking about that and make sure we understand their process. Um, but I've appreciated the way that they've invited us to the table and the way that we're collaboratively working together right now.
Yep, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, and Commissioner, you mentioned um that, you know, we're still having this trouble, which we all have acknowledged today, that, you know, in terms of where our young people are getting guns. And so it doesn't sound like, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we've made any headway on this issue. Um, or are we starting to at least work with our partners a little bit, um, or our partners working with us, I should say, um, to 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 deal with this? Because to me, if they're, if they don't have guns to begin with, then, you know, there's, this isn't going to be as much of an issue.
No, we, we've been working together all year. One of the changes that I made a couple of months ago, we have a crime gun investigative unit um that now falls under anti-crime section with GBU. And we added a sergeant and a couple of other people there, but the main thing we put them under GBU for was, once they trace these nibbing leads of where the gun's coming from, they now have investigative services with GBU to go out and track them. But we're also doing some stuff with our federal partners with weapons and we we got the guy last year and there, there's some other things that are being done that will come to fruition here, here soon with guns. I know um the GV, GBU team did an indictment last week, I think we got eleven, we had eleven indictments and what, seven guns? Eight guns off the street um in one, one day of, and that was part of the GV, GVRS investigation. And then Monty comes in and does the district, the stabilization of the neighborhood and then we move on and we never really leave the area, but we moved to the next investigation. Um, and the people in the area have already noticed the difference because we took some of the big time players out of the, out of the picture, hopefully for a long period of time.
Um, thanks. I th- I know we have a lot of work to do still on that um issue. I have one more question or do you want to pass it around to somebody else?
I understand Councilman Glover has a question. We'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's more of just, uh, just an ask. Um, do, are we working like Monty and and the police department, are we working like with Baltimore City Public Schools, you know, knowing that we're dealing with these young people? And the reason why I asked, um, a couple of community events like, you know, this year, um, I was asked if the Baltimore City Public Schools was working with you guys because of the fact that even when it comes to some of the robberies and things of the nature, some of these kids are leaving from school, committing these acts, and then they run into like corner stores and things of that nature, but what's happening is that the owners in the community are calling the Baltimore City Police Department. And the reason why I asked on you guys communicating or collaborating with the, with North Avenue is because um a lot of times, you know, these officers that work for the schools are the officers that know these students. And it's easier for that officer to um probably have a conversation with that student as opposed to a Baltimore City Police Officer. Not saying that you guys don't come up on the scene, but just having that Baltimore City Police Officer that know that kid well, have that conversation with that individual. So it wouldn't expand and, you know, just go in another direction. I think that would be uh something ideal and great, you know, and in reference to us uh curbing a lot of the violence that we see with our young people in our neighborhoods. So.
Yeah, we work with them a great deal, they're our best intel officers because they're in the school. Um, now, they won't, they won't come out unless they're working in overtime capacity, they're really not going to leave the, too far off the school campus. So, but our officers talk, they know each other. Um, so they they talk and we we talk constantly in youth stat, but it it's the little things like that where you see a kid, maybe you go talk to the, the, the school police officer, it's this kid and he talks to them, hey, you're, you're getting complaints at the school, I mean, at this business, you need to stay out of it. Um, but yeah, our our officers on the ground know each other and we know that, I know they're, got a posting for a new chief. But they uh, Major Coleman has been, has been good with us, with our relationship. And we do initiatives all the time, like they help us all the time with things.
But I think, I think what I was kind of like reference to, uh, Mr. Commissioner is that, you know, e- even if you guys, Baltimore City Police Department was even um at times going into Baltimore City Public Schools, because we also got to build relationships with those young people as well. Because right now, what we're, what we're seeing is that if a Baltimore City uh public school police uh come up on the scene, that that kid is having that conversation with Baltimore City um school police as opposed to maybe having that conversation with you guys. Because in a sense, they trust that Baltimore City Police Officer, um, excuse me, School Police Officer as opposed to our Baltimore City Police.
That, I'd love to have it, but that's something you probably would have to take up with the, with the superintendent of the schools who oversees them.
And I think that's just one of the, I think the the mishaps that we're seeing, I mean, our students need to know that Baltimore City Publics, uh, Baltimore City Police Department are here for us as well, the same way that Baltimore City School Police, I mean, um, yeah, is involved. So I think, I don't know, we got to have that conversation some kind of way.
I think.
I think it works, I think it helps.
Yeah, I think we do have that in in specific areas and geography. So depending on the NCO team, you will have them doing things in specific schools, um, but it also depends on the officers themselves. So there is nothing that is stopping an officer who is a post officer from having a business or school in their geography for going into that school and building a rapport, relationship with that school.
Cool.
There's nothing stopping them. That's what we talked about, every officer being an ambassador, and that's what it has to be. The issue sometimes comes in the fact that um dealing with calls for service, making arrests, dealing with details, they don't have always the flexibility to go into those schools. I would also say unlike the school police, where there is probably one dedicated officer, I know when I went to Mervo, it was Dano when we went there, and it was another female who was there, that was always there. So yes, we built a rapport with them. Unfortunately for patrol officers, there's a rotation. So they may be off today, three days, it may be somebody else. So trying to build that rapport is really going to take more of an effort because just the way our organization is structured, there's officers that are always being rotated in and out of a post. So we don't have that same um formula that the school police has, that this person is at this school, which we would love to have. But like I said, any, every officer should be in their school, making themselves familiar with, when is the game tonight? Who is this person? Who is the dean of discipline? I will say, reaching out to North Avenue, probably not, we really don't do that. We do deal with uh Major Coleman and school police at that level.
Got you.
I will say that each district commander does have a relationship with that principal, and it is worked that way. I said it earlier, three weeks ago, I was at Mervo, up there talking to the principal. We know that there is an ex-BPD officer that's doing truancy at Furman Templeton. So there are some things that we're working out, but we, just like you, would love to expound upon having more of a presence in schools where we can. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, any other questions before we proceed? Oh, yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we, it was mentioned earlier, and you just talked about it, the deployment over at Mervo. Um, we do have that issue where a lot of the kids never even get into the school. They just, whoever drops them off, or if they come off the bus, they go right into the alley. Um, and we do have older adults that see, they are our eyes and ears there, um, which I'm grateful for. Um, but uh, I'm not, I just don't know what else we, I I guess my question is, how is that strategy around um making sure that our young people are getting into the school um coupled with what Monty's working on, and this might be a good segue into Monty, um, in terms of the youth violence reduction at Mervo? Because that is supposed to also be, uh, or whatever the program is called, excuse me, I have way too many acronyms in my head, um, in terms of what we're trying to do there. Because I actually think they're totally linked, the issue. But also, I um, I know that Principal Lawrence um is working really hard to just make it just better to be in the school. So that's her school environment work that she's, that she's doing. So I'm just trying to figure out how the two strategies are working.
Sure. We actually, um, I had a call this morning with, that included Principal Lawrence, um, we were meeting with um representatives from North Avenue and at the schools, really to talk about um some of our next steps with the strategy. So I I do see these two strategies merging. Um, what we're looking at right now is making sure we're identifying the, the appropriate partners for that effort, but I think BPD is going to need to be around the table, we're going to need to have community around the table in addition to all the, the school stakeholders. Um, and so that's something that I expect while we're resetting the table right now, come twenty twenty-four, um, early in the year, we should be able to, to start putting together that plan of what the strategy looks like for school-based violence intervention.
And and that's one area where school police and the school administrators can help us, because if they're, if they're dropping the young people off on, on the campus, then they need to stay on the campus. Obviously, if they don't get on campus, that's something different, but it it's something like that. And even MTA can help us with that. If there's a bus stop that's, that the kids, we know the kids are not going to school, they get off at this bus stop, have an MTA or, or even one of us or somebody sit at the bus stop or just check the bus stop. In the Northeast, what I would do is I had, I had, and this is when I had more people, at Bel Air and Urban, there were seven schools that dumped onto that bus stop within a couple hours. So we had to have officers there to keep the, keep the peace with all the different schools because there were rivalries. Um, and and it was something that cost us a little overtime, but that worked. Um, but something that really worked in the past, and I know they can't do it now because of the contract, was some of our administrators would come off campus, like the Eagle Mart. We would have one of the administrators one up there um and would just, he knew the kids. So there, those kids would behave and he put the Eagle Mart under control in a very short period of time. But I know that it's a liability if they come off campus and do anything like that.
Yeah, I think I need to have a really deep conversation about what's happening at Mervo and not publicly, so um, I appreciate that, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, we'll turn it over to Monty. Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, we'll turn it over to Monty. Director Mavronis, floor is yours.
Thank you. All right. Um, good afternoon, Chair Conway and Committee. My name's Stephanie Mavronis. I serve as interim director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. And looking forward to sharing with you our recap for 2023 as well as some of our goals for 2024. So at a high level here, um, Monty is the stewards of Baltimore's Public Health Approach to Public Safety. Um, we've largely been focused on the mayor's dual gun violence prevention approaches of community violence intervention and the group violence reduction strategy. Um, in this work, we have scaled, began the work of scaling our group violence reduction strategy, expanding wraparound and direct victim services, um, for those who have been impacted by violence to prevent trauma, um, and prevent revictimization, as well as coordinating neighborhood and government level partners around the co-production of public safety. So this is a, um, I know it's a little blurry and hard to see on here. Um, this also is on our website for anyone who wants the high quality version. Um, but midway through our securing year in fiscal year 24, um, the agency's organizational structure is built out across our lanes. At this time, um, given where we stand with staffing, we have three, um, key vacancies. Um, Community Violence Intervention Deputy Director, we've rounded up interviews. Um, we've extended an offer and are hoping to onboard someone in that role very soon. Um, we're hiring for a Finance Operations Coordinator to handle procurement for the agency. And then, um, also looking for, um, you know, the Chief of Staff position is currently vacant as I'm serving in the interim role. All right. I've shared this before, so I won't belabor it, but this kind of breaks out what falls within our portfolio as an agency. Um, with these items being things that are pulled directly from, um, Baltimore's Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan, of which we're in the third year of implementation of this five-year strategy. So I'll start first with, um, gun violence prevention and the group violence reduction strategy. Um, currently, GBRSS is live, fully operational in the Western and Southwestern districts. Um, we are on the precipice of being expanded to the Central District. Um, we are with some of the changes that the Police Commissioner just mentioned, we'll be fully operational at the start of the year. Um, and so that, at that point, we will have the operational capacity to say we are in the Central. The Central District, I should note, is already participating in our violence reviews. Um, we already have our service providers prepped and ready to begin accepting referrals, um, and doing the custom notifications that are needed for the strategy, but did want to hone in on where we are year-to-date in 2023. Um, again, this strategy relies on partnership between Monty, BPD, and the State's Attorney's Office, as well as our service providers, Yap and ROKA. And so here, um, you can see that combined for the Western District and Southwestern District, the circles at the very bottom represent the participants in GBRSS. Um, so year-to-date, we've had fifty-nine participants. Um, and these are individuals who have accepted services after that direct communication was made. Overall, since the launch of the pilot in January 2022 in the Western, we've provided services to a total of 132 participants that are looking forward to driving those numbers up as we expand to the Central.
Director, what does DCLE mean?
DC, Direct Communication. Um, and then you said LE?
LE, yes.
Law Enforcement Only.
Got it.
Custom notification.
Thank you.
All right. Um, this is something we've shared in past, um, presentations about GBRSS, but we know focused enforcement is key to the model. Um, GBRSS combines support and community moral voice with swift law enforcement engagement where necessary. For 2023 year-to-date, there have been 123 GBRSS arrests, including 64 arrests made by the GV, the Group Violence Unit at BPD. At this time, there are two ongoing investigations in the Western District and one ongoing investigation in the Southwestern District. Um, we also track revictimization and recidivism as a component of this strategy. And so when you look at these numbers, this refers to, um, our participants identified by the strategy. Um, we're seeing low numbers. So 5.07% of our participants have been revictimized, um, with 1.45% um, recidivating. All right. I have two, um, slides to share here just around the district comparison. Um, the reason that we're presenting this information this way is because, um, post-redistricting, um, it becomes a little more challenging to compare the district over district comparisons. So you'll notice that this is just showing us year over year, up until the point that redistricting took place, when we can say those boundaries for all of our districts were the same. Um, so this data goes through January 1st to July 9th. There were seven fewer victims in the Southwestern District for this period in 2023 versus 2022. The Western saw the largest decline in homicide and shooting victims in the year following the launch of GBRSS. That would have been our 2022 versus 2021 numbers. Um, largely seeing, um, the effect hold, uh, static here in the Western District with expansion. You know, we, we knew that we would need to do a lot to make sure we're stabilized, that we had city services in place, and that we had full law enforcement support. Um, we've been really key clear that we do not want to overextend our capacity with the strategy. Um, but this is, is currently where we stand. We're now successfully integrating our district resources in both the Western and Southwestern districts, um, which helps us see what the district expansion is going to look like as we move forward. So this slide here, um, this is using the old district boundaries. So this is an analysis that was conducted by my team, really just trying to help us understand if we're comparing the same geographies, um, you know, 2023 to 2022. Um, regardless of redistricting, you can kind of see the effects. So we just wanted to provide both of these to the council, um, so that you can have some information to compare for the full year. We've had a 20% drop in the Southwestern District versus 2022. These are combined homicide and non-fatal shooting numbers, I should mention, while we see a slight increase in the Western District, um, of 4%. And again, those are for the old district boundaries, not, um, after redistricting. So this represents an updated, um, timeline for scale. I mentioned at the top of the section that, um, we will be able to say we are fully operational in the Central District. Um, we're more implemented than we are not, um, but we want to make sure we have full enforcement capacity before, um, we begin to engage our population because we want to make sure we can honor our promise of swift and certain consequences when we see someone doing, um, something they're not supposed to be doing. And we're looking ahead to the Eastern District, um, with great excitement by the end of quarter one of 2024. And so we're going to be pushing ahead. Um, I want to make it clear and just state explicitly that, you know, we had some stabilizing to do post-redistricting. We needed to make sure that we were able to maintain, um, the ground that we've laid in the Western and Southwestern. And there's a lot of work that we've been doing with our technical advisors and partners here to make sure that we are doing that. Um, you can see that we have an aggressive scale-up timeline, but I, I do want to say explicitly, um, no one should interpret this as we're doing one district a year. Um, while we've had to lay this foundation and get past redistricting, we're very clear about where we're heading and the fact that this is a citywide strategy. And so this represents where, where we stand right now. Okay. I'm going to focus a little bit on, um, on Safe Streets here. So, um, you can see our mediation numbers here from 2022 to 2023. Um, while we're still, um, working with our teams to make sure we are mediating all the conflicts that we can possibly mediate in our catchment zones, um, we do note that there's been a decrease year over year. We suspect that part of that is due to some low staffing numbers at some of our sites. But we also want to work with our teams to make sure that mediations are being done in a quality way and that everything that's logged, um, is effective. And so I will also note, um, Safe Streets focuses on gun violence, right? So we do provide information about violent crime and property crime broadly to our Safe Streets sites so that they can understand what the dynamics are in their catchment zones. Um, but I do want to state that, um, we are not expecting Safe Streets to necessarily have an impact on property crime, um, but it's just one of those statistics that we can use to understand what's happening. Okay. All right. So overall, we're seeing homicide reductions in line with what we're seeing across the city within our Safe Streets catchment zones. Again, our 10 Safe Street sites, they're aligned in geography with the BPD posts that they operate in. Um, so even if they're named Beller Edison, it may not include the full neighborhood of Beller Edison, um, but that BPD post specifically. Um, and one other thing I wanted to share here. No, that's all. Okay. All right. Um, one of the key priorities for us in the last quarter of this year and as we move ahead into the new year is a focus on leadership, um, staffing and community engagement for our Safe Street sites. Um, as you may be aware, our Beller Edison Safe Street site, um, is temporarily on pause while we work to rebuild and reset that site, um, first, starting with the identification of strong leadership for the site. And so we've begun doing some of the work in partnership with BPD to advance a few names to the vetting process. We're doing interviewing, um, and all of that, but we're taking a very intensive focus in partnership with Life Bridge and Catholic Charities to make sure that our sites have leadership, um, and that we're driving up staffing numbers. For the council, um, that may have had an earlier version of this slide, there is a column that's not up here because, um, it is not our most recent numbers that represents the, um, staffing ratio at each of the sites. I'm happy to provide an update to the council. I noticed that the numbers we were sharing went through quarter three and not through today. So some of our sites are faring a little better than the data that you might have on your slide. Um, but we're happy to follow up with the council and make sure that you receive the up-to-date information there. And then I'll also just share, um, this is something we're working closely with, um, BPD and the Deputy Mayor on as well. Um, this, these are conversations that we're now having in Police Stat and really making sure we're aligned in the fact that we need, um, the right individuals to do this work and to continue to, to prove that this work is effective. So in terms of 2024 goals for our gun violence prevention team, we're going to be continuing the citywide scaling of GBRSS, um, and the integration of the community violence intervention ecosystem. Um, I mentioned a little bit earlier, our intentions to launch, um, the School-Based Violence Intervention Pilot Program. There's some work that we're going to be doing prior to the start of the 2024 to 2025 school year. Um, I will just say openly, this is a piece of the work that's been delayed in terms of implementation. I know we announced our, our intention to do this a while ago, um, and have needed to make sure that we're being responsive to incidents that have popped up in our schools when they happen, um, while also making sure we have all the partners that we need around the table from our school communities and North Avenue. Um, and so we're, we're having really fruitful conversations, especially in the past few months, and are looking forward to, um, taking this work to the next level.
Director, quick question here. When you say 24, 25 school year, you mean next September?
Yes. So I, I would say full implementation by the start of the school year, and we're going to be looking at ways we can, um, provide some immediate supports in the next semester.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll also say, in the instance of Carver, um, we're already looking at ways we can support right now work that's happening within that school. Um, there's an organization that's been working very closely with Carver that already serves in a kind of credible, um, messenger function within the school. And so we're looking at ways we can support that work while, while building towards the full program. We'll also be strengthening relationships and connectivity across our hospital partners. Um, I had a chance to participate in a really great meeting with a lot of our violence intervention workers at our hospitals and the Health Alliance for Violence Intervention, a national org that does this work. Our hospitals are ready to work with us on this strategy, and I think it's an area where, um, similar to increasing our collaboration with the school system, that, um, can be very fruitful for us as a city. We're also heading into the time of, um, the second external evaluation of Safe Streets. Um, so all of our programming will be evaluated, um, every other year, um, and also are going to be activating some grant funds that we've garnered for, um, listening sessions around community violence intervention. Okay, I'm going to move ahead to victim services. Um, so this is just some of our metrics year over year. Um, our victim services team has been very active. Um, this is a team that's highly visible in the city and has been working really closely with a lot of community-based partners. Um, keep in mind that this work didn't fully, um, start until January of this year, when we had an opportunity to merge some of the victim services staff that were based at the Health Department, um, grant-funded staff at the Health Department with Monty's victim services team. And so we now have a, um, one common unit that works together closely with the units at BPD and State's Attorney's Office, victim services, um, to appropriately serve victims according to their need. At least 163 victims were served in 2023. We define that as, um, individuals who have been actively serviced by our team and assisted with barrier removal. So in some cases, it may be help with something very concrete. In other instances, it may be a referral to mental health services or ongoing kind of case management. Those are all things that we provide in-house. Um, we also employ a broadened definition of victim. And so some of these victims served also came through direct referrals that we made in the community while doing a stabilization event or, or things of that nature. Additionally, the Baltimore City Visitation Center, which is managed by Monty's Victim Services Team, served 702 individuals and over 1,300 people received human trafficking, um, prevention training this year. As we move forward, um, we're looking to continue expansion of victim services citywide. The Monty, BPD, and State's Attorney's Office Victim Services Teams have been doing some great work trying to piece together an interagency process map, really understanding where the resources exist, where we can be doing better, um, and how we can make sure there are no gaps in our handoff across agencies. Um, I think I mentioned before, during, um, after Brooklyn Day mass shooting, our teams, I think, had to, in practice, find a way to collaborate together and do some coordinated case management, really for the first time in that comprehensive way. And that's something that we're continuing to do. So our teams are meeting, I believe, on a weekly basis, um, to review information about how we're serving different victims and families and figuring out which agency needs to, to be the lead according to the needs of that particular individual. We'll be continuing to implement the PSP recommendations. If you remember, and I know you know Chair Conway, this is related to the reform that's needed in the victim services space, um, to make sure we're not criminalizing victims, but we're able to effectively serve them. We'll be expanding our anti-human trafficking efforts, um, as well as expanding the kind of training we can provide in intimate partner violence, both for adults and for teens. And so that's something our team is really looking forward to in the new year. Whoops, just a few more slides here. Um, our next lane, community engagement and opportunity, stabilization response. Um, so these maps here, you can see the stabilizations activated in 2022. That's, um, about midway through that year. I want to say in May or July, we piloted neighborhood stabilization response. And so you can see what we accomplished last year and where we were in the city. Um, on, in the middle, you can see the stabilizations that have been activated, um, over the course of the 2023 calendar year. We covered a lot of ground. Um, the items that you see on the map that are in green indicate that that stabilization is still actively ongoing. And you'll notice some clusters in the Western and Southwestern. Uh, many of these relate to what you heard the Police Commissioner talk about earlier, um, as far as stabilizations we're doing after a major law enforcement takedown, for example, in the GBRSS, um, context. Um, and so these are, this is a map that we're also looking forward to sharing publicly as we put out the next update of the Public Safety Accountability Dashboard. All right. Returning citizens behind the wall, the work is ongoing. I'll just point out here, um, and this is our work that, this is our initiative that connects, um, people who are currently incarcerated, who are returning to Baltimore City with $15 an hour employment with Wreckin' Parks. Um, we're looking forward to really building on this partnership and driving up our participant numbers here as well. We have 32 active participants following a soft launch this spring, 2023. I believe we got started in the month of April. And we've had a total of 77 participants since launching. Um, we're excited to think about how we bring more agency partners at the city level into that. We know we have a lot of vacancies as a city, and so where is it appropriate to connect them with this work? Wreckin' Parks has been an excellent partner, as has Moed. Um, and we're excited in 2024 to really go behind the wall and continue to do some education and recruitment here. So as far as goals, um, looking to work closely with BPD to scale the sidestep youth diversion program citywide. At present, we're still only in the Western District, and so that's really a goal for us in 2024. Um, we want to continue to strengthen our interagency coordination and community partnerships around public safety challenges, um, from youth violence to auto theft. We also, um, to our earlier conversation, are looking forward to strengthening coordination of services with the Department of Juvenile Services. Really looking to elevate our neighborhood stabilization response efforts, launch safe return plans, um, for everyone who's returning home to Baltimore City. That's work that we're laying the groundwork for right now. Um, and in early 2024, looking to launch the Reentry Action Council, um, as well as scaling and enhancing neighborhood policing plans. enhancing neighborhood policing plans. So we'll have an opportunity, probably within the next week, to share with the council where we're going next with neighborhood policing plans and are looking forward to really putting in practice what we've learned with our initial pilot. All right. In the policy and research lane, this slide here outlines where we stand with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. You could see a list of our principal agencies and current work groups. We've added some work groups. We've made some changes based on where the work stands. I know interagency data and IT is one of those things that's really emerged as a need. We've got to make sure our systems talk together and that we have ways to share data. But we're continuing to look to this space to discuss some of the things that we also talk about in this room. But this is really a place where local, state, federal stakeholders are coming together and convened at the local level. The Public Safety Accountability Dashboard, we're continuing to expand and improve the dashboard. We put this out last February. By this time, this, in 2024, we're looking forward to putting up version two, which will include some new features based on feedback we've received and other things we've been working on, a crime summary based on the new police districts, of course, really being able to visualize the breakdown of crime on a map, and also seeing where some of our place-based strategies fit in. And so these are some of the things that we'll be able to see on the next version of this dashboard. And this is currently accessible, I should say, on Monty's website for anyone who wants to check it out and dig into public safety matters by neighborhood, by year, by age, and then a lot of other factors. So in 2024, this team, our policy and research team, will be working to enhance 911 diversion efforts. We're working to expand upon the foundation, the strong foundation that's been laid in the behavioral health 911 diversion space and consider other matters that can be completely diverted from police, fire, and EMS attention. We are staffed to the Public Safety Advisory Commission, which is an official board and commission of the city, really looking to more fully activate this body. I think it's an area where we need to appoint more members, and so that's something that we want to work with the council on in the new year to make sure we can get adequate representation in that commission. Also looking to fine-tune and scale IPV stat and GBRS stat. There's a few interagency data sharing agreements that we're working on as well. Want to make sure we can formalize some of the work that we've been doing, as well as the biennial update of the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan. And so this is, I believe, the last slide in my presentation and happy to answer any questions here.
Thank you, Director. We're going to open up to questions. And I'll start with a pretty big one. I'll kind of go in order. I was taking notes as you were going through the slideshow, so bear with me as I sort of find my notes as I go through that slideshow. The first question I had was, do you have any insight? Unfortunately, you don't have your superior here at any moment, but what the plan, timeline, or otherwise is to permanently fill the director role?
That would be a question for the administration. I think as I'm in the interim role, I'm committed to making sure we can advance the work, and I think we have the benefit of, as an agency, of having a very clearly defined strategic plan. And so from my perspective, I've been happy that I've been able to continue to work with the team in this role, and I'm certainly here to serve as long as I'm in the role.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think you've been doing a great job thus far. You know, just noting that Monty oversees a lot of very important parts of the public safety puzzle. I want to make sure that, you know, you're able to do that with all the authority and ability necessary and, you know, whoever it is that actually ends up taking that permanent position, we understand what that timeline is. I know, how long has the position been making? How long have you been interim? I think is a better question.
I started in role on seven one.
Seven one, okay. All right. The other question I had, and then I'll hand off to my colleagues, was, there was a slide that talked about recidivism and revictimization of context of GBRS. I was really curious. I know we had some arrests, and I think here it says we had 123 arrests with the GBU unit. Do you know at all how many of those 123 are back on the streets?
Say that last part one more time.
How many are back on the streets? Out of the 123 that were arrested, how many are actually, you know, back on the streets?
I don't think we have that right now, but it sounds like we'll be able to get that to you.
Sure. Yeah, it was just a thought of mine, and when we were thinking about recidivism, you can't recidivate if you're not back on the streets, but it is helpful to have that proper denominator, just so that we know, you know, that folks are tied in the programs and aren't just still in jail. If you could come up to the microphone. Thank you, Deputy Director. Press the right button. There we go.
Does that work?
That works.
Okay. Terrence Nash, Deputy Director for the Group of Violence Reduction and Tragedy. So with the State's Attorney's Office and the Baltimore Police Department, we collect that information. We collect a lot of information, so we can get that for you. We can get that for you? But we can get that for you. It just will take, like, it might take a couple days, but we can certainly get that for you. I dog fast, I can't help it. It's horrible.
You'll fashion that back to the committee.
Yeah.
Is it week fine or end of the week?
Yeah.
Sure.
End of the week.
So we'll look for that at the end of the week. Thank you. I'll turn it over to my colleagues. I have, of course, a number of other questions. We're going to start down this way. Councilman Burnett, any questions at the moment? Councilwoman Ramos? Okay. We'll come back to you. Any questions on this side? Councilman Costello, Councilman Glover? None at the moment. I'll continue. So the other round of questions that I had were regarding some of the trends that we're seeing in shootings and homicides across the districts. I thought it was really helpful to look for it that way. And two thoughts came to me. One, of course, looking at the raw numbers and noting that we saw a 62% increase in combined homicides and shootings in the Northern District. You know, I'm curious what we're seeing there, what we know about that. And then also, I think one of the troubles that I have here, and one of the requests that we made to the Police Department, and they've reliably provided this in their regular slides, are a look back at the previous years, because I know, looking at, for instance, the Northeastern District, we saw a 22, excuse me, a 17% decrease compared to last year, but last year was an off year and the year before that was an off year. And so when I'm thinking about recalibrating to where we normally expect to see the Northeastern District, I'm not sure where we are relative to that. So I'm curious for those two points, looking back at, you know, a number of years so that we know where we should be, and then just looking at that spike in the Northern District, and tell me what's going on there.
Thank you. Definitely can take your suggestion on the, just having more historical data so we can understand trends. I think especially we've seen throughout the pandemic in particular, just a lot of variation that we haven't typically seen before. In terms of the specific things that are driving increases in the Northern District, I would maybe defer to BPD, just given that we're not as actively, we're not actively there yet with the strategy, but I don't know if there's anything that BPD would like to share.
Yeah, I'm curious, and I know when we had this conversation about the Northeastern District last year, they were seeing like a 104% increase, percent increase over the previous year. One of the things that we discussed was a change in the number of DAT teams that they had. They went from two to one, and then we were also looking at the new district maps. I'm curious for these numbers, how we think about those problems, and if there's anything like that going on in the Northern District that we should be thinking about.
So, excuse me. So yes, so for the Northern District, we realized that they had the, you know, a lot of, not a lot, they had several multiple victim incidents, like the one that was on York Road and Cold Spring. The Northern District, unfortunately, like the Northeast District, is what we would call a sleeper district. Unfortunately, where you may not have the same number of drug trafficking organizations like in other districts, you have a lot of individuals who, after they're dealing or doing their dirt somewhere else, they're residing in the Northeast, they're residing in the Northern. So the propensity for them to put their guard down because they're home, they're stopping at a corner store, there's some of that in play there. Also, the Northern District taking some of, some different geography along that Pimlico Corridor has picked up some of that also, that issues with violence. We realize that the Northern District is one of those districts where, I hate to say it, but it can lull itself to sleep. It goes for a period of being dormant, and then it's something big, and then we're playing the catch-up of where, what the intel may have led to that violence. I think that's one of the things with the strengths for Major Azalee Johnson is identifying, once an incident has happened, deploying for it properly. But the problem is that, you know, a lot of the issues that the Northern has been having has been individuals who have, are doing their dirt somewhere else. So it's not necessarily on their radar in the Northern, it just happens to be the geography where the violence has been met. So that's one of the issues where, not only with the Northern District, but us as an agency as a whole, where we do have to do a better job with intel sharing and kind of spotting these things out of, I'm having a problem with this individual in my area here, but he has a girlfriend over there, he has a home over there. So I think that's the information sharing that we do have to do better in. One thing that we do on our crime calls Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, is when we're going back over individuals who have been the victim of gun violence, is ensuring not only the district that where it occurred is watching it, but the district where the individual lives at, where his mother lives at, where the associates are. These are also those ancillary areas where we have to be aware of, that I think sometimes district commanders get lulled into, well, it wasn't me, but it will be you next week. Unfortunately, if you don't put something in place to have some kind of strategy in reference to that individual where he may be residing at or frequenting.
I appreciate that. Couple of thoughts here as you were talking. One, and maybe I need to clarify this with Monty, because I believe you guys pulled together this chart, that this is the old district boundaries, so we're looking at today's crime in the old boundaries. Is that correct?
On the slide, there says 2023 year-to-date, 1-1 through 12-11. That is using the old geographies.
Okay. That is helpful to know. So yeah, this sort of stands out to me in, you know, in part because the Northern District is a large part of my district and, you know, the issues that I'm seeing there are interesting, not so much the violence typically, but nonetheless, you know, seeing that spike, it makes me wonder where, why, and if there's anything we should be doing about it. I know GBRS is not yet in the Northern District, and it will be hitting the Northern and Northeastern District last. And so, you know, I'm curious, by way of strategy, from a policing perspective, what we're thinking about to address those issues. And if you don't have those answers, because we're looking at an old map here, I totally appreciate that, or old map data, totally appreciate that, but it is notable. I want to hand off to my colleagues, because I know I've been asking questions the whole time. Anybody else have any questions at the moment before I continue? Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one that's very, very specific to my district, and I can't do this publicly, so I have to talk with you separately. But the other question that I had was about the timeline for GBRS in the Eastern. Are we set for quarter one still?
We're looking at by the end of quarter one, 2024. We think it's ambitious, but we think we can hit it. And I think, as I've talked to the Police Commissioner, I know earlier this week, we know the Eastern District's already been modeling some of the things that we see with GBRS, and so we feel like it's an attainable goal, and we're going to be pushing towards that goal.
Yeah, and let me know what you need there from, if there's anything I can be helpful with, because we've been looking forward to it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. That's it for now.
Thank you. My next question is around the expansion, and I'm just curious what we've seen to date. I know we are now moving into the Central District after having already expanded to the Southwestern, and I think it's great, we're already seeing returns in the Southwestern and even in the Central, I would say. I'm curious, by way of staff and resources, have we found that we needed additional staff, both for Monty, for BPD, or even for our partners, Yap, Roka, and others that are sort of critical in operations?
I'm happy to speak to Monty and our service providers and then, you know, would allow BPD to speak about their staffing. I think the Commissioner mentioned earlier some of the staff that will be added to the team to support on the enforcement side for GBRS, so that's really important as we're taking this next step for scale. But from Monty's perspective, I think we may have shared with the council before, our GBRS team in-house, we have a GBRS Deputy Director, Terrence, you just saw, and two project managers that sit under him. One that manages our community moral voice partners, a key aspect of the strategy, and then another that works directly with Yap and Roka on the service side. They're managing three districts and all of the individuals that are a part of that and the caseload that's a part of that. We think three districts per that set of project managers is what's going to be required. So as we head into 2024, we are anticipating on the Monty side needing two additional staff to support the community moral voice and service work as we expand to the East Side, and then soon thereafter, the South Side of the city. So that is the staffing that we're anticipating as we head into 2024, needing additional from Monty. I don't know if BPD wanted to share anything additional about their staffing.
Yep. So in reference to BPD, I appreciate it. I think we were already slated in reference to filling our commitment of three enforcement teams and three investigative teams. We were looking at the dates of the 17th and the 31st, so we should be where we need to be by the end of the year. In reference to, I will agree with Stephanie, in reference to the Eastern District, we're looking forward to the end of the year in reference to being there, being that the Eastern already has those double DAT teams, so that will help us out with that. So I see us robustly getting where we need to be, but staffing is always an issue and a concern for us, because in order to fill the GBRS slots, they have to come from somewhere. And the come from somewhere is normally patrol or DAT or something else. So while we are looking forward to increased enhancements in recruitment, this is sometimes a robbing Peter to pay Paul kind of thing, and making sure that while we are increasing our GBRS numbers, we're not hurting our district numbers and creating another void somewhere else. So this is sometimes a give and take where we may identify the need in GBU or GVS or G-Vet, whatever it is, and we have to identify it, apply for it, interview, give them the necessary, but have to hold it until the next academy class comes out to free the individuals up to go. So it's kind of one of those things where we're trying to be strategic, because what happens is if we pull them too fast, then that district suffers. And then, so now we're trying to, yes, we know there's a need here, academy class, backfill the district, slide them over to GV. So it's kind of being that masterful, but yes, right now, the 17th and the 31st are where we're looking at for providing more individuals.
Got it. I'm guessing those are lining up with classes coming in.
Yes.
And as far as the expansion citywide, I know we still have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, if you count the Central District, districts that we'll be adding to the GBRS model. With that staffing sort of influx, does that fully staff us for the rest of the city? Or are we going to need another influx after the next class?
We will always need an influx with the next class, yes.
Got it.
And Chair, you asked about Yap and Roka and how prepared our service provider was for scale. They're prepared. So typically, because they're doing intensive life coaching, we want to make sure that our life coaches and staff, particularly at Yap, they're typically hired by ZIP code. So we know that there's some individuals that do work in the Western District who can do work in the Central because of the proximity and also some of the overlap post-redistricting. Our service providers have the funding to support additional staff capacity, and they'll be hiring at the pace of our expansion.
And does that require any additional funding from us in order to do so, or is it, they're fully?
So Roka has a recurring annual general funds allocation from us, so that supplements the strategy for their work with the younger population of young men. And then for Yap, they have a multi-year contract with us that supports. And then for Yap, they have a multi-year contract with us that supports the scale-up plan.
I see, so it's already factored into the plan?
It's already factored in. Their current contract goes through fiscal year twenty-four, so we're just looking to figure out, like, given where we are with scale now, based on what we expected to be with the expansion, we'll need to make some adjustments to that budget over time with them, but that's something we're doing right now. But they do have, we're not expecting additional funding needs beyond what we've already committed.
I guess my sort of question is, although we've had that plan, it wouldn't be reflected into the budget until we do the twenty-four budget. So is that a correct?
Yap's contract is funded through Monty's ARPA allocation. Roca's comes from the general fund.
Got it, okay. That helps, thank you.
And a part of Yap's contract, I'll mention, it supports, of course, the staffing for intensive life coaching and some of the operational support there. It also has funding for the emergency relocations that we have to do, and also supports stipends for our participants. So all of that's kind of baked into their budget. And you'll notice even from some of the diagrams we shared earlier, the pie charts, that Yap ends up taking a larger share of participants, largely because Roca is working with the young men between sixteen and twenty-four. Yap has taken some of our young women, and they also work with the older population. And given where we started in the western, it was the slightly older population that we saw as the drivers of violence by and large.
Got it. Do we have a budget for GBRS specifically?
Just for the service side, or do you mean like total?
Total, because I'll tell you why I'm asking the question. Just because we know we're going to run out of ARPA funding at the end of twenty twenty-five or whatever, when we're allowed to spend it. And twenty-six, twenty-six. And so I'm just preparing us as a council to think about how we fit that into the budget, what it's going to cost. So I guess my question is, like, for the whole program, as we begin to evaluate what that is, do we have a budget? Do we have a strong sense of where the spending has gone, so that when we have to make that decision as a council, we have all the information we need?
For sure, we definitely know where the spending has gone. And we're also in the midst of kind of post-ARPA planning. I think from our perspective, there's a lot of demonstration work that ARPA has allowed us to do. There's a lot of new stuff that we've invested in as a city that hasn't been invested in before. And so we're definitely also looking for ways that we can do that. I know that we have philanthropic partners who are really interested in the strategy and what they see as the return on investment there. We want to make sure the council has that information. And I know at different points in time, we have come up with budget estimates of sort of what is that cost? It's been challenging at times to figure out, like, how do you quantify the BPD cost, or the state's attorney's office cost? But at a minimum, we have all of those numbers for the service side of the work.
Is that something you'd be able to fashion to the committee?
We may, we may just need to make some updates to it, but I know we've produced it within the past year. And so I'll work with my team and see what we can share with the council. And you're, can you tell me one more time what you're looking for?
I really want to begin to understand what burden the city would be taking on in twenty twenty-six when we no longer have the ARPA funding, so that we could figure out how to restructure parts of the program in the future. And so we have time. But as we roll this program out and we're looking for efficiencies, we need to be thinking about those components now, so that we can sort of test those, those things out over the next couple of years.
Thank you, yes, absolutely. And we welcome the council's partnership on that. I think the worst thing that we could imagine happening is to do all this great work, to see the great return, and then see those services fall off. And so we cannot allow that to happen. And would love to make sure the council has what they need to do that planning with us.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. Any questions? I got more. This is, this is the last one of the year, so I want to make sure I get them in with you guys. I want to jump over to Safe Streets. And there was an initial slide that we shared that talked through mediations, homicides, shootings, violent crime, and property crime. And in that slide, two things really jumped out to me. One was the, the decrease in mediations. And Director, you said that was probably a matter of low staffing. And when we got into the slides a little bit later on, we had a table that had a list of sites with directors and otherwise. I was really curious if we knew mediations by site, or if we could provide mediations by site to understand, you know, the ones that don't have a director, have vacancies, and are not quite seeing the mediations. And what we can do to sort of shore up those, those sites, or provide whatever it is they need in order to be up to speed. Do we have that?
Yes, we absolutely do. I would also invite everyone to take a look at the report section of our website. We produce reports quarterly and annually for Safe Streets, which break down mediations, not only by site, but also by type. You can see at what point in a dispute did a mediation occur, and what was the outcome. And so that stated that, to my knowledge, the city has never shared publicly before, and we want to make sure people know exists. Our CVI staff is looking at the mediations that are entered on a regular basis, because it's a key part of how we provide technical assistance in the program. But one thing I'll also note about the mediation numbers, so as part of the mayor's work around really strengthening the program and looking for areas for improvement, one of the changes that we made, which may also be reflected as we're thinking about the, the quality of the data here, is in the conversion to a new database and a new system that we're using to get more detailed mediation information from our sites. And so prior to this administration, our model, Safe Streets, in addition to other cure violence models, used a national database which had some limitations. And so our hope is that not only are we able to share a more detailed breakdown of the mediations by site and by other factors, but we can also ensure higher quality of the data moving forward. And so happy to provide that. Are you looking for a breakdown by site for this?
Yeah, that would be helpful. The other thought that came across my mind was regarding the shootings. We saw a twenty-six percent increase. I think I know what that is, but I'm just going to ask you what's going on there. And I'll give you a second if you want to.
So this would be a twenty percent increase in shootings within the specific catchment zones of our sites. You know, I would say that this represents an, an ongoing challenge and something that we have to work with. Anytime there's a shooting or a homicide within one of our Safe Streets catchment zones, there's really specific protocol around what happens, and how we get to the bottom of that dispute. Not only to make sure at a community level, we're sending the message that violence is not normal and we can't accept it, but also so that we can make sure there's no retaliation on the basis of the incidents that we're seeing. I'm not sure if, if Crystal has anything to add here about the increases that we're seeing, but.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Crystal Miller, Associate Director of Gun Violence Prevention with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. And I would say one of the contributing factors is the Brooklyn incident, mass shooting from the summer that has contributed to the increase in shootings. And I believe that is a victim count versus a specific incident count that contributes to that number that is on that report.
And so there were twenty, twenty-eight?
I'm sorry?
Twenty-eight. Well, I guess twenty-six shootings to homicides.
Twenty-eight shootings to homicides.
Twenty-eight shootings to homicides.
So if you look at the table also that has the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three year-to-date, I mean, you could see for the Brooklyn site, we saw an increase in homicides and shootings. But the, you know, we went from last year, twelve shootings, to this year, thirty-eight total shootings within the catchment zone. And so that does strongly bias the numbers in that direction.
I see, so that was a huge setback for us. Otherwise, things were generally getting better, even despite the mediation decline.
Yes, there's, there's still a lot of activities and work alongside with the mediations that is happening at each of the sites, including the invincible activities. We've actually seen November with zero homicides across all ten sites. So it definitely speaks to the work that all of the sites are doing.
Yeah, and I think, and I want to be careful with what I just said, generally getting better despite that massive shooting. We did not get better. I think it really begs the question about the big blind spots and what those can mean to our bottom-line numbers. And so, you know, of course, we've talked about the lessons learned from Brooklyn at length here in this committee, but, you know, continuing to make sure that we're, we're identifying those pieces and those opportunities in partnership with the police department and other folks. All right, I think that just about touches on all that I have. Oh, I had one other curious question, and this was about the victim services. We noted a hundred and sixty-three victim services, folks who were served in twenty twenty-three, up from eleven in twenty twenty-two, which is a great increase. What I was curious about was what triggers the victim services outreach? A hundred and sixty-three, I initially thought it would be shootings and homicides, but we've, we've had more than a hundred and sixty-three. So not every shooting homicide necessarily triggers victim services to step in. I'm curious, what, what is that threshold? Is it within certain areas, or how do we think about that?
So Monty does not have the same limitations of criteria for who we can serve that some of our partners at BPD and State's Attorney's Office have. So we're not just looking at direct victims of homicide and non-fatal shooting, although those are a key thing that would trigger our services and certainly qualify someone from services. We also have some people who are self-refering. We have people who are calling saying, hey, this happened to me, I need support, I don't know what I need, but I need someone to help me navigate it, and those are some of the things that our team is navigating. We also frequently get referrals from other agencies, elected officials, other partners in the work, who, whether they don't have the resources on hand to assist someone, but they know that we might be able to tap into some other resources. We're getting referrals from a lot of different ways as well. And so some of the things that we're getting referred may never qualify for BPD or State's Attorney's Office victim services, but we're still committed to helping people. It's why we're specific in saying that we employ this broadened definition of victim, which includes not just the person at the center of the incident, but also their family. We talked a little bit about school students. When we know that there's been a shooting that involves a young person, how are we wrapping our arms around that family? And so this is work that I expect is going to continue to deepen, especially in partnership with Dr. Brooks and the team at Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. But it is a big increase, and I think also reflects the fact that not only did we add additional case management staff that I mentioned from the Health Department over this calendar year, but we've also streamlined some of our services and offerings. And I'd love to share with the council that kind of interagency process map I mentioned, because I think, if I recall, like, our first victim services hearing to now, I'm really impressed by the way I'm seeing our teams work together and just the way that they're being complimented in the community for how they're showing up. And so that's something we want to, we want to continue. I don't know if that, did that answer your question?
Almost. So I think what I was looking for is, you know, how, how do we, how do we bring people in? What is the threshold for us to intervene? Clearly, one of them was, you know, someone self-referes, they come in, they say, look, you know, my, my brother was a victim of a shooting, and, you know, I'm worried about this, that, and the third, and we'll step in and we'll provide services. But, but what is our sort of, what is our ideal person that we want to work with? How do we determine where we want to put our limited resources and have the greatest outcome based on those limited resources?
Absolutely, no, it's a really good question. I think for us, we, if I think about who is that individual that we would serve, it's probably, we see ourselves almost as like gap fillers in the victim services space. So we know that there's some people who have never been able to get support on their own, or maybe they've only had the options available to them to go to the CBO landscape and figure out who might have an opening in their program to help them with something. I think for us, that's almost like our ideal population, is sort of the people who don't have anywhere else to go, because our lane, our victim services team was designed specifically to fill the gaps that existed in the victim services space. I think for us too, if there's an individual who qualifies for BPD victim services, then while our team may play a role behind the scenes, or maybe problem-solving with the, the teams at BPD and State's Attorney's Office, we're not going to duplicate services. And so I would say that's one of the things that's also important to us. How are we actually bringing more of a, like, coordinated care model to the table for our families? So that's, you know, a really broad answer, but I think reflects what we're seeing. I mentioned that we come across people who might self-refer, or who we meet knocking doors through coordinated neighborhood stabilization response, who say, like, this shooting happened outside my house, I'm not feeling safe, and I need to talk to someone about that. That might be someone our victim services team is working with. And so there is a range, so it's hard to, like, come up with that profile, but we could certainly pull out some of the stories and kind of types of cases that we've seen to even paint a more detailed picture beyond the numbers here. That's something I'd like to do.
Yeah, it sort of begs the question for me, because we have so many different victim services units, one within BPD, two within Monty, three within State's Attorney's Office.
Well, we have one. The team was merged into one happy family, so we have one victim services team at our office.
And so that is the same?
Monty has a victim services team, BPD has a victim services unit, and State's Attorney's Office has a victim services unit.
That's what I meant. They're operating, there are three, three units at least operating out of different offices. And, you know, sort of begs the question, we're thinking about making sure that we're providing consistent and reliable, and the best and highest level of service needed. Given the conversations that we've had about victim services and treatment of victims, you know, that means we got to go to three people. We got to coordinate with three directors and a commit, or two, two directors and a commit, oh, actually, State's Attorney, Commissioner, and a director. So, you know, I'm curious, you know, as we think about that, you know, how we interact with folks. Certainly, the need is there, and I've heard that from a number of folks. So I just want to make sure that we're thoughtful about the different places it's located. I still have more questions, but I kind of want to let you guys go. And I can ask you these questions directly after the meeting, Director. But any other questions from my colleagues? I want to thank you guys for all the excellent work that you guys have been doing over the last year. I'm glad to see progress. I'm glad to see, you know, finally, some of these numbers trending in the right direction. We absolutely still have work to do. And frankly, you know, we all know that, that that progress is still not enough. I would love to see homicides under two hundred again. So, you know, encouraged by the work happening thus far, really looking forward to next year, and happy holidays. Thank you, guys.